The Wednesday, June 4th, 2025, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, 7:00 PM, being held here at Mashpee Town Hall, Wacoia Meeting Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. We are being recorded in live broadcast. We're being live broadcast on local channels eight and 1072, and streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov/number-8. We do have a Zoom link. You can access our meeting via Zoom. The meeting ID is 935-972-4042. Passcode 844710. That's meeting ID 935-972-4042. Passcode is 844710. And if you're on Zoom and you want to speak, raise your hand through Zoom, and we will do our best to recognize you. We do have a great IT Mashpee TV team that helps us with that. So, at this point, I'd like to invite everybody to rise and join with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we do have a 7:10 public hearing, but it's not quite that time. So, what I'd like to do is look over the minutes of May 21st, 2025. So, the first set is the joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee.
Yep.
I looked at them. I thought they looked fine.
The only thing is, this is where I got confused about last night, because I said another workshop will be scheduled, so.
I know. I was wrong with that meeting, but the information was what I said at the meeting.
Uh-huh.
It wasn't factually correct. Do you know what I mean? So, maybe you could put that in the minutes, that we had our workshop meeting yesterday.
Yeah.
Was there anybody here interested in that workshop meeting with the Housing Committee? Okay, well, that's good. The other thing I wanted to mention was, you know how I talk about the comments in the back of the HPP? If you could clarify that those were made on the 2024 version of the HPP.
Oh, that's the update, right?
That was the, yeah, and then we'll have new 2025 comments. That was the only thing I thought needed to be changed.
I don't think I technically made the motion to, uh, I don't think I made the motion to nominate Dennis to the Historic District Commission.
So, that's the next set of minutes.
Oh, okay.
This is just the May 21st joint meeting between the Planning Board and...
May 21st?
Yeah, and it, there's, there's, the first, like, four pages is the Housing Committee.
Oh, the Housing, okay.
So, we'll make that correction to the next one. How about we get through this one, take a motion to accept as amended the Wednesday, May 21st minutes for the Mashpee Planning Board and Affordable Housing Joint Committee.
Obey.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, regarding the regular Mashpee Planning Board meeting that started at 7:00 that evening...
Madam Chair, I just have one comment for that.
On this, on the, this set?
Yeah.
Yep, go right ahead.
On page seven, the comment that I made where it says, "Mr. Tobin would like to understand how not vegetating the basin would impact the town's adoption of a road." I would just recommend adding, "When the basin in question is on the other side of the perpendicular street." I mean, we're talking about, I was talking about the street, the basin that's on Carrot Shop and DeGrasse as opposed to Blue Castle.
Right.
So, I'd accept that modification, and we...
No, I can just go back and see if you made that motion.
Okay.
And we'll correct the... Is that okay if we leave the Secretary to correct that?
Yeah.
And just accept it with those two amendments?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll take a motion for that.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Give it a second.
All in favor, yes, Karen. Yeah, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we can open up the 7:10 public hearing. So, the Chair opens up the 7:10 public hearing. The applicant is DPF Mashpee LLC, South Cape Village, excuse me, the location is South Cape Village Shopping Center on the corner of Route 28 and Charles Street. The request is a special permit modification to construct a 2,500-plus-or-minus-square-foot restaurant with 44 seats, 38 indoor, six outdoor seats, in the Building G pad site pursuant to sections 174-45.1 of the Mashpee Planning Board. Now, I'll read into the record the public hearing notice. This notice is given pursuant to the Regulations of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, regarding the public hearing to be held by the Mashpee Planning Board under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, on Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, at 7:10 in the Wacoia Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to review a special permit modification from DPF Mashpee LLC, property owner, to modify the South Cape Village special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a 2,500-plus-or-minus-square-foot restaurant with 44 seats, 38 indoor and six outdoor seats, in Building G pad site located on the corner of Route 28 and Charles Street pursuant to section 174-45.1 of the Mashpee zoning bylaw at South Cape Village Shopping Center, Assessors Map 81, Blocks 4, 16, and 25. The proposed, the proposal seeks to reduce the size of an already-approved building to accommodate a smaller tenant. Submitted by Mary E. Weg and Shear, Mashpee Planning Board, publication dates Friday, May 2nd and Friday, May 9th, 2025. So, of course, this is a continuation of that special, the permit, sorry, public hearing that we opened up at our last meeting. Was there anybody from the public that wanted to comment on this matter? Okay, thank you. So, seeing none, we'll, we can jump right to, and the project proponent may approach. We can jump right to the modification of a special permit decision. It's in your packet, as are folded revised plans, as is a letter from Ed Pesci. So, I'll just review those three, those three pieces. So, we have a June 4th letter from our Board Engineer, Ed Pesci, that he notes some information that he received from the applicant, and he concludes, "After review of the revised plans, engineering and technical responses, and associated document, documentation, all of my previous engineering review comments have been satisfactorily addressed." Okay. The comment that I had about having some signage over at that crosswalk as it goes across the loading zone, that's on the, on the plan. And I do have a question about the decision, but I wanted to see if the project proponent read the decision and has any comments.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Eliza Cox here on behalf of the applicant. Also behind me is Karen Johnson from Brand Street and Matt Eddy, the Civil Engineer for the project from Baxter Night Engineering. We did receive the decision. I want to thank your Town Planner for a comprehensive, thoughtful decision. We just have two minor tweaks that we'd like to suggest as it relates to the conditions. I can go through those now if you'd like, Madam Chair.
Yes, ready.
Yep. So, the first one is relative to Condition 2, and what we would request is that the last sentence end after applicable, so a period there, and then the words, "And said setback shall be 20 feet be stricken." And let me explain why we're asking this. So, as the Board, I think, will recall, and as is reflected in, earlier in the draft decision, the Planning Board has set dimensional setbacks with the original special permit decision of 10 feet from, from Charles Street. In the last modification, where we were before the Board, the Board waived that to 4.2 feet. We're fine eliminating that waiver for the purposes of this decision, but we were asking the Board not to impose a new, larger setback with the reference to 20 feet. I will say, we are proposing the building at about 20 feet, but just for future flexibility purposes, we'd like to just end that sentence after applicable, which has the effect of, basically, the status quo, but eliminating that 4.2-foot waiver that you've already granted.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Brian, you okay with that?
Yeah, I did have just one other thought, though. Instead of saying, "shall be 20 feet," can we just say, "shall be 10 feet"?
You can do that, that's fine. I mean, that's already sort of reflected in the fact that you carry forward the prior conditions of the decision, but if you wanted to leave it at, say, 10 feet, that's fine.
Yeah, I think it may just, if anybody's questioning that, looking into this decision with, rather than having to go back to the last decision and also read it super thoroughly.
Yep, that's fine.
I have to look.
All right. And then the second one is, and I did speak with Brian about this just before the hearing, but I have a little bit of language to suggest to clarify it. It's Condition 4, and it says, "At least 15 parking spaces in the immediately adjacent parking area shall be reserved for this use."
Mm-hmm.
What I'd like to insert is after reserved, a comma, and then it would say, "For zoning calculation purposes, comma, for this use," so that we're not actually putting signs down or striping the pavement that 15 spaces are reserved for this use. But in the future, the Board would, or the Town would, if they're looking at sort of zoning parking calculation purposes, understand that 15 have been sort of allocated for this use, which is the requirement under zoning.
Say that again, please.
So, it would read with the revision that I'm proposing, "At least 15 parking spaces in the immediately adjacent parking area shall be reserved for zoning calculation purposes for this use."
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
And I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I believe the rationale there is that they don't want any implied requirement to have to actually label the parking spaces and to put it on the plans, so.
All right. And that's it. Those were the only tweaks that we are suggesting to the decision.
Okay. So, going back to page two, the Plan Review Committee, right, they had, they had four requests, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, can you just run down, tell me how those four were incorporated?
Yeah, and maybe I'll ask Matt, who's making his way here, since they're sort of more technical.
They're right here.
Adequate sediment control.
Yeah, that's, as we talked at the last hearing, yeah, there's silt fence, silt act, et cetera, and as confirmed and identified as on the plan.
Replacement of the pear trees, right?
Yep.
That was done.
Yep, we altered the landscaping plan.
Sleeve installation of the grease trap.
Yep, that's...
Yeah, we're fine there.
Knox box installation, fire alarm testing, and fire department access.
That will all be at construction documents at building permit application.
And there's something in here later on that says something about complying with the fire department's request.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm good. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I know my grandson said, "I hope this passes," because that's my favorite restaurant.
We want to, we want to do something on this. Oh, number, what page is that on? It's page six.
On page six, are we okay with those construction hours?
Yes, we are okay with those.
Effective what?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Verifiable emergency.
So, it says, so, it says, "No construction shall occur on Sunday absent a verifiable emergency." Who verifies it? Should we say, "And notification of the Building Commissioner"? Or do you want to, you want to think about that language for the next one?
Well, it would have to be verified retroactively because the Building Commissioner doesn't work on Sundays. So, in lieu of receiving a citation from the Building Department, say, on Monday morning, after the complaint of an abutter or somebody using the facility, they could show proof to either the Planning Department or the Building Department.
Okay, got it.
Say, "Hey, listen, the scaffolding was gonna fall if we didn't get in there and do something," you know?
But then you explain it to me, and I go, "Oh, okay." All right. You okay with it, Karen?
If you want to specify, you know, verified by planning or building or both, you know, that's fine.
Post.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's, I think it's, I think it's clearly implied that it's retroactive.
Okay.
Because nobody works on Sundays, you know, so.
Okay, so, as long as the Planning Board or someone is advised on the staff here about it on Monday.
I would, if I could, Sue, I'd just recommend that it be the Building Inspector, the Building Commissioner, as opposed to the Planning Board.
Right. Well, I think we'll skip it for this one, and the next one will...
Boy, pardon it.
Because I, because the other thing is, the Building Commissioner, he's gonna get a call on Sunday. He's not gonna, he might not be happy with us.
Yeah.
So, we'll work out that language.
If it was emergency, too, you could call the Fire Department and say, "We have emergency here. We're letting you notify because we couldn't notify the Building Department. So, at least you have a record, like, I already notified." And they'd be the ones would probably come out.
Well, to, yeah, I mean, to be clear, there's, there, there isn't written into the condition or requirement that they have to provide notification in advance, and that's just kind of the nature of emergencies.
About emergency.
Yeah. It's just retroactively, it would serve as a defense to a citation from the Building Department.
I also think that location of this site and where this building is proposed isn't gonna have the impact if something were to happen on Sunday that it might if it were, you know, part of a residential neighborhood or another area where you have to be more concerned with, I think, that condition.
Yeah. I mean, it's closest to a bank, and banks are typically closed on Sundays, so.
I agree. All right, so, I'm good if I, oh, go ahead, Rob.
Just a little technical information that kind of threw me, but there's a, a letter or email from Zach. It says, "Good morning, Brian. It looks like they have enough flow for a few restaurants. For the fast food, it is 20 GPD gallons per day per seat, and the, the grease trap would need to be rated at 15 GPD, GPD per seat." Now, you have, that seems like a lot of grease for 44 seats times 15 gallons per day.
The sizing for grease traps is based on 15 gallons per day per seat. That's the standard, that's code requirement, so 44 seats, it's 660 gallons. Minimum size we spec is 1,000-gallon grease trap anyways, so. Yeah, you're more than covered, but that's, that's standard code. That's, that's, you know, sewer and Title V code for grease traps.
So, those, the Title V numbers are theoretical, it's not the actual...
They're all, they're all, I know, they're, the numbers are high when you look at...
They're typically high, too.
Intended to be, too.
But it, it actually does raise another question. I'm not sure if Zach's email, it may be the wording of Zach's email, or if I misheard it, or what, but, so then, is it 15 GPD for the grease trap plus 20 GPD?
No, no. Waste water flow is calculated based on the 20 gallons per day that he's talking about. When it's a fast food, it's 25 gallons per day per seat. That's your total waste water flow. That's what you, if you had a septic system for discussion, just for simplification, that's what you would size your system for, the pipe carrying that, et cetera. Separate from that is a just separate calculation of 15 gallons per day per seat for the grease trap sizing, because your piping, your plumbing actually comes out of the building separately from the dishwashers and certain sinks and so forth for the grease lines, goes through the grease trap, and then it ties back into the sewer line, so. And then all of it, at the end of the day, goes to the treatment plant. So, those two, those two numbers are separate, they are not cumulative 100%.
Yeah. Sorry if I'm the only one who's slow at the table here, but...
Oh, no, we've had those questions before, Brian.
More slowly, please.
But I guess I don't understand why there's, they are separate if they still both end up in the, in the wastewater treatment.
Again, it's the, the 20 gallons per day per seat is the total flow that is expected to be generated per seat in a, in a restaurant use. That's the total flow that leaves the pipe that goes to the treatment plant or wherever it's gonna land ultimately. The grease trap is just a totally separate standalone calculation that they say they use 15 gallons per day per seat for sizing of a grease trap tank, just so it gives you volume, you know, the grease trap, grease trap, all it does is, as the grease water goes through, which, again, is a separate plumbing, again, off of dishwashers and sinks, et cetera, so that when it goes through that tank, it has time to attenuate the flow, and so that the grease can solidify somewhat, and it allows it to fall out, so it just is taking the grease out of any water, which is not great for the downstream.
So, it goes through separate filtration before...
Goes through a separate tank, yeah, it's, I mean, a grease trap is fairly simple.
Before it ends up in the wastewater treatment.
Correct.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
So, the law is 20 gallons of grease per day per seat?
Nope, 15.
15.
For grease trap, that's just, that's solely for the grease trap tank sizing.
The 20 is for the fast food restaurant.
20 gallons per day, right, that's the total wastewater flow. And again, those two numbers are separate, not cumulative, they're just, they're used as design criteria.
Put that in my rolodex of things to know.
Right.
Okay. There's no other comments and no comments from the public, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
Obey.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rob, you're seated on this vote.
Aye.
Okay. So, there are two proposed amendments to the conditions. I think they're fine. So, I'd take a, I'd accept a motion to approve the, this modification of special permit with the two conditions proposed by the applicant.
Obey.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
And send Dennis an invite to the grand opening.
My grandson. He called me today.
That is so awesome. I'm glad he's, he's paying attention.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we got an email from our Board Engineer, who is not here and not on Zoom, right?
Correct.
Do you have that email?
I do.
Would you like to read his updates for us?
Sure, I'd be more than happy to.
And while he finds that, is there a subject matter that you would like to speak to the Board about, ma'am?
I'm just here regarding Orchard Road and...
Okay.
That's why I'm hanging out, too. Just in case there was any questions.
Well, let's hear, let's hear the report from the engineer, just in case there's something about Orchard Road, and then we'll, we'll go down to Orchard Road.
Wonderful. So, I'm just gonna go ahead and read verbatim. "Hi, Brian and Hannah, here's the updated letter for this project. Also FYI, I will not be able to attend tonight's meeting, either in person or via Zoom, since I am traveling. For the purposes of the Engineer's Inspection Update, Osprey Court, no change since the last meeting, still awaiting the scheduling for binder paving. 474 Main slash 31 Ashumet, binding construction continues, and final drainage work starts tomorrow and through next week. Island Pickle, no change, building foundation work continues. Country Club Estates, prep work continues, subgrade work for the next phase of development, and they have submitted revised drainage plans for my review. I scan them attached." So, there are two revised drainage plans here. I'll just include them in the next week's meeting packet.
Okay. All right, so, you said Orchard Road?
It's the Willow Circle.
Oh, okay, because I'm like, it's not on our agenda. All right. So, let's go, let's skip the HPP and go to Lot 1 Willow Circle, which is also being referenced here as Orchard Road. Is there anything in our packet about that?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, he had it, I just got this.
So, I'm happy to...
Is it just the...
So, if you all recall, if it wasn't the last Planning Board meeting, it was the Planning Board meeting before that, Mr. Scott Miller of DeSilva Developers came in before us because he had called up the Planning Department to basically do the right thing regarding Lot 1, which is the, one of the last lots to be constructed in Willow Circle.
Oh, yeah.
Willow Circle is a additional subdivision underneath the Willow Bend special permit. It's just off of Quiniquisted Avenue. It has a reasonably sizable history there in that the special permit was approved, as well as the subdivision was approved. There was originally a conservation restriction on one of the lots at the end of the cul-de-sac. That conservation restriction was lifted, so the developer came back to be able to build on that lot. That was approved by this Board. The, the developer then proceeded to pull building permits. In between the time that all of the building permits, except for the building permit for the last lot, which is Lot 1 and street address, 6 Willow Circle, was pulled, the Town passed the tree preservation bylaw.
Okay.
So, the plans originally called for cutting all the trees in the back down, putting up a 10-foot-high fence, and planting new trees on the backside of the 10-foot-high fence, all along the back of the lots on the westerly side of the subdivision, which abuts all of the lots on the easterly side of Orchard Road, I believe it is, Orchard Road or Orchard Street, Orchard Road. So, all of the trees prior to Lot 1, which is the first lot on the westerly side, just as you enter the subdivision, or the southern, southwestern-most lot, had all of the trees cut down behind them, had a 10-foot fence put up, and had new plantings planted behind that fence. Lot 1 still has the original mature trees there, which are approximately 30 feet in high. This is the one that Dennis and I went out to do a site visit to kind of figure out what the best thing to, to do was in response to the applicant's request. So, Scott had called us up, or had called up the Planning Department and said, "Hey, listen, my arborist said we can go ahead and comply with these plans and still plant in these new trees underneath the mature trees that are there, but what's gonna happen is because of the canopy of the mature trees, these new trees are just gonna die, and whoever tries to plant them again in the future, a future owner, is gonna have the same problem. So, not only is it throwing good money after bad, but it's gonna create problems for the landowner in terms of being compliant with the special permit in the future. Technically, noncompliance in that arena could result in a zoning code violation, since it's a condition of the special permit." So, after Dennis and I did the site visit, we decided the best thing to do would just be to leave the mature trees up and not to plant new trees in the back in that Lot 1. The applicant had represented to us that he spoke to the neighbor whose property is immediately behind that Lot 1, and again, we're talking about the street address, 6 Willow Circle. Her name is Ms. Carol Souza, forgive me if I'm not pronouncing it right. I know a lot of folks in town are familiar with her, and the applicant had represented to me that he was, or that she was rather okay with this arrangement.
Right.
Orchard Road.
No, no, 6 Willow Circle, she's on Orchard Road.
Yeah, right behind.
What's your address?
132 Orchard.
132, got it, okay.
So, I subsequently, as I had promised this Board at the last meeting, I subsequently was able to get in touch with Carol, because she had had different conversations about different lots with the builder. There was a little bit of miscommunication in, in the beginning, then it seemed, at least to me, and she's here tonight to speak for herself, but once we had narrowed down that we were just talking about Lot 1, we were on the same page, and she was okay with it. You know, I did inform her, of course, of this meeting tonight, and she indicated that she would still like to come. So, she, she'll probably be speaking after the applicant. But I think that sums it up, and Mr. Eddy, if you'd like to chat at all about things, you're more than welcome to.
So, Carol, why don't you come up?
I really don't, and after I spoke with you, you did clarify the letter by me, so I'm pretty much okay with what you had said.
So, you received a letter?
Right here.
Okay, and that's from Willow Bend or from...
I'm sorry?
No, the, the letter was from us, because this is technically a public meeting, is an administrative modification, a minor modification, so rather than send out notice to all the abutters, since only her lot would be most directly affected by it, we went ahead and just hand-delivered a letter addressed directly to her.
Okay, so, Dennis reminded me, I have to have you say your name and what street you live on, right into the mic, so that everybody at home can hear you.
Carol Souza, 132 Orchard Road.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, you received a letter about this meeting. Have you seen these plans?
Um, no, but however, when I spoke with you, I think it was earlier this week, and you did say, you know, the meeting, and I would be, you know, free to come. That's the only reason I'm here, because you did make it clear, I told you I had the Assessors Map.
Right.
And you clarified the lot behind me, which made more sense, because I go by the map and parcel, and you had the lot number, which wasn't identified on that.
Yes, that, that was the other slight source of miscommunication between myself and Ms. Souza at the beginning of...
Souza.
Souza, so sorry. I want to say Souza, though, Souza sounds more fun.
Come in here, Ron. And then here's the lot, and here's the note.
Right. It was just that she was going off the Assessors Map, which apparently she had pulled had pulled from the library records, pretty cool that those are there.
Matt, come on over and show her the note.
And I was going off of the subdivision plan.
Sorry, okay.
That's okay.
And that's the only thing, Matt, you changed on the plans, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, that was that prior condition actually, that the planning board put on this, was to pull that fence 10 feet off the property line into Scott's lots, and then plant that, provide that buffer strip behind it, so then this, you know, Lot 1 of Willow Circle, as we just discussed, and as Brian did a very good job in explaining it, is just about the trees that were gonna be planted behind the fence, the fence is going in, the trees behind it won't be planted, everything that is gonna be behind, that's on your side of the fence, if you will, existing trees are not to be cut, that's noted on the plan, and-
This is a little convoluted to me, but this, I'm sure is the same thing, because this is me, this is what you're talking about right here, because Brian had said that's Lot Number 1, which made sense.
Yep.
The fence pretty much goes right here, and the fence is gonna continue up to Quiniquisted.
Yep.
And the trees, currently, there are trees that were planted-
Those are, yep, those will remain.
Okay, and when I spoke with Scott, they were pretty much, a lot of them are dead.
Well, he'll have to take it, you know.
But that's what I was wondering, oh no, that's okay, but I was just wondering, are they gonna replant those trees then, so are there gonna be trees on this side?
If they died, I mean, the ones that were planted.
Okay, so you're gonna have trees up to here, and then no trees the remainder of the way.
Yeah, so you'll have, you know, that fence will still go in, and then instead of planting new trees behind, which will die because they're not gonna give you light, this is just all gonna be your existing vegetation that's out there, and that will remain.
Which was wonderful right from the beginning.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Because, I mean, it was total trees, I mean, and I looked out my back window one day, I'm like, oh my god, there goes the forest.
I'm so glad you came in and you did.
Well, he explained it to me, and I was very happy that you did, because like I said, I had this all written down, I'm reading the letter, I'm like, this just sounds contradictory, as far as the discussion that we had, I says, I just wanted to be clear, and again, that's the only reason I'm here, and thank you, because I met you many years ago. Thank you, thank you.
And just for the record, the reason it sounded contradictory is because she was talking about all the lots leading up to Lot 1, where the trees had already been cut and new trees had already been planted, and I was talking about Lot 1, where all the trees had remained.
Yeah.
Right, but nothing was indicated on this letter, and I don't know if you have a copy of that letter?
Right, because I was not savvy to the fact that she had had conversations with Scott about those other lots before, I thought, I thought the conversations were always about Lot 1.
Is this for me?
You can take that.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just quickly adjust, Ms. Souza, of course, you're welcome.
Thank you.
But just for this board's information, the trees that are dead that you're referring to, where are those, are those behind Lot 1, or are those-
It's not really Lot 1, I wanna say it's Map 63, Parcel 23, Map 69, Parcel 23.
Yeah, I think she's referring to the trees that were planted-
The original, yeah.
Fence went in, so per the subdivision approval with lots 2 and 3, the trees that were planted on her side of the fence, but the fence is 10 feet into Willow Bend, into Willow Circle property, sounds like some of those trees-
Yes, yes.
That are newly planted have died, and those will need to be addressed for sure.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Prior to-
So, separate issue.
Because I don't think they were watered, and I think that's what he said, there was something initially that was put out there, and, I mean, some of them are beautiful, some of them are fine, but some of them look like they're dead, and I thought he had said they would, that was the end of that, and don't even replace them, just-
Yeah, or, yeah, I mean, I know, I mean, just real quick, Ms. Souza, I believe, and tell me if I'm misspeaking, but just from dialogue over the, you know, several, few years, I'll say, some of the trees that are behind, that are already planted, that are dying, that are, you know, on-
Right, okay.
Right behind your house.
And Paul.
You actually didn't, don't like those trees as much, is that-
What are those trees that are dying?
And that's when I had a discussion, and I wanna say with Rodney, a couple of years ago, I thought originally, way, way back, they were gonna be, what do they call them, spruce trees, tall spruce trees, there's a mix of trees there, there's one big, beautiful, and I think it's a blue spruce, it looks like a Christmas tree, and I even said to Scott the day that I met him on the property, I says, I was tempted to decorate that tree, it's beautiful, it's big, I says, that tree, as far as my estimation, it should've been put way in the far corner, because it just takes up so much space. And even, maybe last year, I made a little fuss, and they came and resurveyed the property, thank you very much, and they put markers out, because it was a boundary marker, right, and thank you, and there's another marker, and it's a permanent marker into the ground, and we've even spray painted it, so I says, okay, that's you, this is me, but like, those trees, like I said, it's like, I've even been tempted to put flowers there, I'm like, well, I don't know, it's not mine.
I mean, the reason I was just bringing that up is, if some of those trees that have not survived, that are on Ms. Souza's side of the fence, even if they're on Willow Circle property, but on your side of the fence.
Right.
Am I speaking incorrectly?
You're perfect so far, no.
That Scott had mentioned when he was talking with you, that you weren't crazy about all the trees that were planted on your side of the fence, right?
Yes.
So all I'm bringing up is, potentially, and, you know, we could do a site visit if we need to, whatever, but if there's some trees that have died, and you, and she doesn't really want them anyways, maybe they don't, they get removed, so they're, it's not an eyesore, but they're not replaced, because I think the other thing too, was the trees on the opposite side of the fence, which was, you know, part of the dialogue way back when, you know, it does make it more difficult to get to, to maintain, to water, until they get established, right? So I'm just putting that out there, I mean, if not, if everybody says, no, if they're died, you gotta replace them, you gotta replace them.
Right, I-
Well, technically, that is a condition of the plan.
It's a condition of the plan, which if we need to change, we will, based on your recommendation.
Yeah, my thoughts-
Do you know what I mean, like, if, if, if it's in the landscaping plan that these tenn trees are there, and you ask that, you know, there's only eight maintained, we will agree to that.
We'll modify it.
We'll modify it, so-
So long as those trees are the ones that directly abut her property, right?
Right, it's in that, yeah.
On my side of the fence.
Right, so we're perfectly amenable to taking some type of action to modify that.
Well, they weren't watered, from what he said.
I don't wanna overcomplicate that, I'm just putting that out there on the ones-
We will, just like we're doing now, we're gonna modify everything for-
A big, beautiful Christmas tree, put it over here where it has room to grow.
Not to overcomplicate it, but I just wanna make sure that all the trees we're talking about, or even though they're on Willow Bend property, they abut her lot, because if they go up to the next lot, then we should probably loop in that abutter as well.
Right.
That's why, again, I don't wanna overcomplicate that at all, I'm just thinking, it's a shame if there's trees that are, have died.
Sure.
Well, they're not dead, but they're-
And she doesn't really want them to replace them.
Here's the thing, Matt, you're, you're, you're actually really not overcomplicating things, and, and this is why what Scott did was such a good thing, is that I've seen abutters 20 years later fight over whether or not a privet bush or a cedar tree should have been planted according to the plans in the special permit.
Right, so we definitely have to-
So it's way better to nip this in the bud now, and not cause problems for somebody two decades down the road.
So, I mean, I think for now, just again, for, you know, for tonight's decision, I think you gotta draft, you gotta draft it up anyways, so you won't be voting on it tonight, but, you know, addressing what we're talking about behind Lot 1, that's done as far as we're talking about. The other aspect that I'm talking about on the replacement of dead trees and so forth, we'll deal, we'll cross that bridge.
Oh, I'd rather wrap it all into one shot, because otherwise, you gotta come back and we've gotta do a revote and this whole thing again, so, if you all could, between now and-
What tree, but I don't know what trees.
Right.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I wrote it down, and I shook hands, and I said to myself, did I misunderstand?
Is, will accept this note, on this modified plan.
Yep.
And then when the building commissioner goes out for that final inspection, he's gonna see that certain trees aren't ready, aren't, are dead, right? That's when it comes back to us, because the building commissioner is gonna have the landscaping plan that we required, and he's gonna be able to mark up which ones are just, are not viable.
I agree.
And that's when we, that's when we modify the, the special permit, so that we're not gonna require replacement of those dead trees.
If, right, when you get to that point where it's the final inspection that does the final question.
Right, but that would be a modification to the special permit for both, because the plans are referenced in the original mod, in the original modification to the special permit that led to the subdivision.
I don't think we'd have to have a formal public hearing, it would just be-
No, we, again, we wouldn't have to have a formal-
Minor modification.
Right, it's not a-
But we, we really won't know, like, without a site visit, we really won't know what trees are missing.
Let's, let's cross that bridge.
Later.
Well, no, here's just what I'm thinking, is, it's not that it's a public hearing notice, it's that what I'd rather not do is draft two modifications to be recorded with the registry of deeds.
I don't think we're ready for the second modification, we're ready for this one.
Right, well, so why not just do all in one shot later? Otherwise, it's gonna create, it's gonna create a messy chain of title over two different sets of trees.
No, because at the end of the day, we got this final inspection that has to be done, Ed's gonna have to inspect it, you still have the covenant release that has to occur.
Yeah.
So part of that, the covenant release, that's what makes total sense, I agree with the chair, at the end of the project, because you have all other elements that have to be looked at, there's gonna be the trees that'll be looked at, there's gonna be the final pavement that's gonna be looked at, all that aspect, and we can, you know, maybe there's something else out there too, everything get, get rolled together at that point.
We're gonna, right, and I have a feeling that, that Ms. Souza's neighbors might wanna comment on the trees behind them.
Sure, so then we're saying the same thing though, because then it's rolling everything together and doing one modification.
But down the road, not for Lot 1 right now.
Modification, part 2, down the road, because we still wanna give the trees some time to, we, trust me, this is easier.
Yeah. We wanted to get the okay.
We're just, we're just gonna, we just want to-
We'll deal with the dead tree aspect later, if we need to, we might not even need to.
They might die between now and then.
Yeah.
The building commissioner might go, I'm not, I'm not dealing with this, I'm just signing on.
Thank you.
No, but whether the building commissioner says that now or not-
But we don't want, what this does today is it, it prevents those trees from getting cut down.
Right.
Well, the trees, he doesn't have to cut the trees down, because he's not in a rush to pull the CO, so they can take care of this.
Oh, the CO.
I spoke to Scott today, he's not in a rush.
CO, correct.
He's not in a rush to get the CO issued.
He want, if I can, just please, I know, representing the applicant, Scott, he want, you know, let's put this one to bed, he wants to get this to bed.
Hey, Matt, can I just, can I make a recommendation though, you should probably sit, because your head's cut off on TV.
That's all right, man.
No, but pull, pull the chair.
So, what documentation do we need to approve this plan? Do, do we need to have a, a special permit modification?
Yes, but what I'm very much recommending is not doing two modifications for trees to a special permit that already came-
I think we're not going in that direction, Brian.
Okay, great, then we're on the same page, wonderful, wonderful.
Just this.
Wonderful.
We just wanna do this.
No.
We just want, because he's got this notation, no trees to be cut behind southwesterly side of fence, in that notation, that's all we're, that's the only modification we're making to the special permit.
And all I would say, Brian, if I can, is the only request that the applicant is making is the modification that's in front of you, there's not a modification beyond that, so let's just-
Okay, but so, so Matt, then, is he likely to plant the trees, because here's the deal.
Well, I mean, right now, yes, if the trees are dead, he will have to retransplant them.
Right.
And that's at the end of the project, when it's being closed out for covenant release and the whole nine yards, so.
Okay.
But that would just affect-
Then that's gonna be the applicant's official position, so we're later down the road not going to do-
No, but later down the road, we can come in with a request for another modification based on the dead tree aspect.
So you're gonna have, in your chain of title, two modifications just for trees to a special permit that effectively is-
We have 30 modifications for the special permit in Willow Bend already.
But that's, that's because it encompasses all of Willow Bend and not Willow Circle. This Willow Circle is a singular-
We love, we love special permit modifications, we love them.
Mine are, I may.
Ryan.
I, I just do not think it's the right approach, I think if we're gonna-
I'm sorry.
I think we should just wait and do them all, there's no harm in waiting if he's not in a rush to get a certificate of occupancy, and we can take care of the entire thing before he gets a certificate of occupancy, we can have one modification and one plan, and it's gonna make everything better for future property owners in that subdivision. I've said my piece.
Okay, so, so I guess we'll keep this on the agenda for next time, for a special permit modification approval.
A minor one.
A minor one, because all we have is this plan, and we can't just approve this plan, we have to approve a text too, a special permit modification, which we don't have tonight, right?
You were going to draft up a special permit modification.
Yes, we, we can do that, my recommendation is we wait until we resolve the other trees, and we do it all in one shot.
But, Ryan, I'm very sorry, but we're not going to do that, so we're not, I, I mean, we can take, we-
Well, look at what the matter on, on front of us now, it had nothing to do with those trees that were dead, it had to do with Lot 1, and we have-
So let me, let me ask the board.
The component there, watch leaves of trees, which is a good idea, so-
What, how-
So would the board, would, I'd, I'd accept a motion from the board to accept Plan C4-1 as amended with the revision date of 5/23/2025.
So be.
Well, um, what, so Brian, what's like, give me like the simple, the skinny version of what you're saying, what's the-
The skinny version of what I'm saying is it's half the work and half the confusion if we do it all in one shot on the back end after we work out this other issue with the trees, and since the applicant has indicated to me that he's not in a rush to get to a certificate of occupant, it would be different if he said, I've got a purchase and sale agreement locked up, and I'm closing 30 days, this has gotta get done now, but he's indicated that he's not in a rush to get the certificate of occupancy, so it's half the work and half the confusion on the title later on down the line for people in Willow Circle, because with Willow Circle at present, there is just one mod that deals with this subdivision, it's not like the rest of Willow Bend where there are 30 modifications. This is one of 30 mods in Willow Bend, but Willow Circle itself, which is getting labeled at the registry of deeds with Willow, as Willow Circle on the side margin, now that it has a street name, only has one effectively special permit, right? So we do this mod for some trees behind one lot, and then we do another mod for some trees behind another lot, it just creates a lengthier chain of title, and it creates twice as much work, and it's twice the expense of the applicant and the form of recording fees.
Well, we're already, I mean, he's already expending it, but let me just throw this out there, is this possible, because right now, you weren't gonna, you don't have the draft decision, that's gonna be for next go around, let me at least, you can, you know, do whatever action you need to tonight, but it's gonna be, you're not gonna do a final vote until next hearing, let me, that'll give me an opportunity to talk to Scott Miller tomorrow, to find out, to fill him in on this, you know, point that he's probably gonna shoot me for even saying something, and I'll just say, hey, you know, there's some dead trees, Ms. Souza, identify there's some dead trees there, there's an opport, you know, potentially, you wouldn't have to replace them, if Ms. Souza and the other Orchard Road abutters agree, we might, you know, have to do a quick site meeting, but I could find out if he's like, yeah, that makes sense, I'll do that, and then we, and then it could wait, or he might just say, no, I'm just, I'll just take care of transplanting the dead trees, and then it becomes a moot point. Does that make some sense?
Okay, all right, so we'll table this matter and put it on our next agenda.
Which, which you're gonna be on the next agenda anyways, because you still have to do the, you don't have a decision yet, right? Which, which you're gonna be on the next agenda anyways, because you still have to do the, you don't have a decision yet, right? You had to draft up a decision, a modification, right?
So is everybody, just a straw poll. This plan that's, that's revised five twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, is everybody good with that comment? And it says, you know, behind lot one, no trees to be cut behind southwesterly side of the fence. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Because they will die.
So, yeah. So you can say that, yes, we did a straw poll. We're good with this plan. Figure out the next piece about the dead trees.
Should there be no trees to be cut down?
Mm-hmm.
And no new plantings planted?
So they've taken it off the plan. They took the, they took the.
That's what the plan showed.
Okay.
Trees to be planted have, have been removed from the plan.
Okay, good.
Because if you notice, right, it's, it has all the trees, the landscaping trees, but behind lot one, there's none.
So I'll, I'll check in with Scott, and I will report back.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Hi.
Bye, Matt.
Good night.
Nice seeing you. Okay. HPP. Do you want to do the update, or do you want me to do the update?
I can do it. Sure.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you wanted to do it, but I'm happy to do it. Yeah, so I think since the last workshop that we had with the AHC and this board, which was a joint meeting at, at five thirty PM, just before the last regularly scheduled planning board meeting, there have been several updates. The first is I presented the HPP plan to the select board at a regularly scheduled select board meeting. I discussed briefly about what the background of an HPP is, where we were at with this current plan, and also the upcoming timeline that this board had reviewed at that workshop. We got a lot of positive feedback from the select board, which I'm really excited about, from multiple members of the board. In particular, of note, Ms. Wyman Columbo, at the very end, said she was very happy with this plan. She said that the updates from the May twenty-two-five plan included a careful balance between Mashpee's local concerns for its environment and water quality in particular, as well as a need to produce affordable housing. So that was great, and I'm very, very happy and enthusiastic about that. We also had our first working group, first scheduled working group meeting on five twenty-eight. And that was, that consists of a member of this board, which is Madam Chair, a member of the select board, which is being jointly shared by Mr. Whedon and Ms. Wyman Columbo, the consultant, myself, Mike Sparks, who's the head of the AHC, and I think that's it. Am I forgetting anybody? No, that's the entire working group.
And then we had, we had time with the consultant during those.
Yep. And the consultant was there and provided a lot of feedback. And Mr. Sparks had some interesting comments about the appendices and how to label them and make them more clear, as well as some tweaks to the executive summary, all of which were informative and I think very appropriate for this stage of the HPP, because at this stage, we really are. I mean, we've been into this process for about a year and a half now, and this is the second large comprehensive draft that addressed, directly addressed a lot of public comment. And again, a lot of that public comment was about emphasizing the environment and water quality, as well as emphasizing affordable units as opposed to market rate units, which again is ultimately the purpose of an HPP, is to focus on affordable housing, because it comes under MGL Chapter forty-B, which is the, which is our affordable housing chapter. So, of state law, of the Mash General laws. So this current draft addresses that a lot, and it's really, you know, our hope is that public comments, board comments, working group comments, et cetera, are really narrowly focused and narrowly tailored to the specific wording of this draft at this stage, as opposed to big picture concepts. So, which leads to the next point, which is we had a second, yesterday, we had a second follow-up working group, or excuse me, workshop with the AHC. It was a joint meeting between the planning board and the AHC. And a lot of great comments were made. A lot of those comments were big picture. And a lot of the big picture comments, fortunately, are already in the plan, which is great news. A lot of the, or some of the big picture comments, I should say, are not in the plan and can easily be added, thankfully, even though we probably want to focus more on just kind of specific changes and tweaks at this stage. And then some of the big picture comments, and this was very few, but some of them are great and are worth noting. It's just kind of too late to add, but we can certainly add them at the five-year plan. For example, one of the members of the AHC had a comment where they thought, we should do a survey that focuses specifically on people who don't yet own homes. So you're only surveying people who are actually trying to own a home. And I thought that that was a great idea. One other data point that I meant to mention, that I think is important too, is that at our working group meeting, we had a really thoughtful, intelligent, and comprehensive discussion with Mr. Whedon about how we can possibly align incentives with the tribe and the town for creating affordable housing that's earmarked for members of the tribe. So I think that pretty much sums it up.
Yeah, David was really, he was very, is very interesting, David Whedon. Because, you know, I've always been scratching my head whenever the state said, well, you couldn't have a preference for tribal citizens for a tribe that's located, like, in the, inside our boundaries. You know what I mean? Like, it's part of Mashpee, right? So, um, he talked about it would be, it would, it would be part of reparations. It's not so much affirmative fair marketing, so it's, it's not based on race balancing and minority balancing. It's reparations. And I was like, I knew there was a way. So I think, I think he's, I just think it's gonna take a little bit of time for us with the state's housing office to kind of make that happen. So it's in our plan. That's our goal. Do you know what I mean?
Yep.
We might, we might, like yesterday, I said, we might redline, have some more redlines to look at.
Right.
But.
Collaborating with the tribe is definitely in our plan.
Yeah.
Ways. Of course, we want to do it in a way that the tribe fully supports, if they support, you know, so that's.
Right.
But that is in our plan. And actually, a couple of just timeline comments I wanted to make on that is a reminder that the public comment period does close this Friday. That's June sixth. So the public comment period for the HPP will close. It'll end, the thirty-day public comment period will end Friday, June sixth. That's this upcoming Friday. So it's your last chance to get in public comments. Our preferred method, of course, is either at public meetings like this one or through hppcomment@mashbma.gov, where you can submit comments electronically and in writing. Of course, you know, I have gotten some phone calls with some folks, and we're happy, the department's happy to take those phone calls and have those discussions. But the best way to be heard and to ensure everybody fully understands your perspective, as opposed to your perspective translated through the planning department, is to either do it directly at a public meeting or in writing.
Okay. Sounds good. There's working group minutes or notes in your packet? And I think it looks like we have received three emails today.
Is that in the packet?
Yes.
Well, that's because they were received today, Karen. So if you pick up the hard copy on Friday, they're not gonna get in there for you.
What's that?
I know. Yeah, like.
You, you pick up the hard copy on Friday, so if those emails came in today, there's no way to get them to you if you want the hard copy.
We're just jinxed with the packet tonight. Like, poor Karen and I can't, but I, I think I figured it out. So you, you keep those. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We already did, so thank you very much for all the hard work on the HPP. I think we're almost there. We already did lot one, Willow Circle. Okay. So new business, possible amendments to the zoning bylaw.
So I'll just mention the one.
Explain this, because I've read it a few times, and I'm not grasping it.
So let Brian, let Brian talk, and then I'll, I'll follow up.
Yeah. So the one that I'm interested in and proposing and I'm knowledgeable about is tweaking the difference, the present difference in our bylaw between ground-mounted solar in I one versus ground-mounted solar in C two and C three.
That's this one.
So brief zoning bylaw history there is that prior to allowing ground-mounted solar in C two and C three, ground-mounted solar was only allowed in I one in Mashpee. And it was through only plan review committee approval. So it didn't come before this board. This board then very skillfully developed and made more robust our ground-mounted solar bylaw as solar itself evolved over the years. So these were amendments were much more recent. In doing so, they created the right to build these kinds of solar projects in C two and C three via special permit based on the meeting minutes from the original genesis of the drafting of these articles. That was at least in part and potentially entirely from a decision out of the city of Waltham, known as the Tracer Two decision.
Yeah.
So the idea was to expand the land area, at least in part, in Mashpee, so that more zoning districts would allow for these types of solar projects. Very well-crafted bylaw, as I had mentioned at the last planning board meeting when we were talking about it. You know, it includes things like a decommissioning plan. It includes things like a glare study. All of the things that, now that solar has really developed, and we've had, you know, over a decade of experience of dealing with them, dealing with solar panels more frequently, are kind of industry standards and industry practice. So that's great. But it left this question as what to do with variances, because the bylaw has some very rigid and, and large variances, excuse me, very rigid and large setback requirements for the solar panels, but then specifically allows the planning board to waive those. So for example, it's a hundred feet to a residential structure. In certain circumstances, the planning board may find eighty feet to be acceptable, given the topography, as well as whatever trees are in the area. So presently, expressly written into the code, there isn't a set way for applicants in I one, who technically only have to go through plan review, committee review, to get planning board waivers. So what we're doing with this current project, since they have to modify, which is eight-five-eight Falmouth Road, and which is what led to the genesis of this issue, is we're having them, since they have to modify their special permit, which is a ZBA special permit anyway, we're gonna have them also come before the planning board as a public meeting. The planning board vote will then get incorporated into that special permit decision. And, you know, they can then appeal effectively both as a result of that special permit modification, or a butters could appeal, or there could be no appeal. But the point is that there's a procedural way to incorporate both. Now, we lucked out a bit.
Do you get that? Because it only goes to, because it's only plan review.
Yeah, no, it should be this.
There's no.
I agree with Brian.
Yeah. If it's a special permit to us, we can waive those things. Otherwise, there's no mechanism to.
Right. Right. And written into the code, it's not just in the special permit section. Written into the code is the ability of the planning board to waive it for I one, C two, and C three.
All three of them.
Yeah. So the question is, the board can take two approaches there. And, you know, I'd rather get a consensus of the board, although I have my opinions on it. One is, you could just say, there's no waivers in I one. So you either have to completely comply with those requirements. And things are the status quo. You still go to the plan review committee, but there are just no waivers in I one since you're not in front of the planning board. In which case, C two and C three would still be special permits. I one would say, uh, plan review committee.
Kind of strange, the state. Okay.
So the second approach, of course, is to have I one now become a special permit. So it'd still go through plan review, but then you would have across the board a special permit for I one, C two, and C three, as well as across the board, um, plan review committee. Does that all make sense?
I like the second one.
Why would we want to do option two?
Why, why what?
Why would option two be good?
Why would it be good?
Yeah, why would it be?
Well, I'm not making a recommendation either way. You guys can discuss.
It's this chart.
Yeah.
It's this chart.
Yeah.
So all this would, what, what our amendment would be to change under this last column, first row, that plan review to special permit?
Or Dale, perhaps I could be a tad esoteric and answer your question with the question. Why, why? Dale, why wouldn't it be?
Yeah, I'll get to that, but I don't, I don't want to get ahead.
Now.
Well, you all should discuss.
Right. I mean, it was intended, the, the plan review only was intended to make it easier, right? But because there's no mechanism to get a waiver from those dimensional requirements, it actually is causing a problem for a property in town.
So it's causing problems for applicants, or?
So we perceive that as time goes on, this problem will remain. It'll go away if we change that to a special permit. So even though some property owners might go, oh, a special permit, not just plan review. Actually, it'll be easier, because they'll be able to ask for waivers from us.
I see.
Like, like, you know, saying, well, maybe a hundred foot between the solar farm and the closest house is too far.
Mm-hmm.
Considering the topography or the vegetation between them.
What is the distance on, is it eight fifty-five Falmouth solar farm?
It's eight fifty-eight Falmouth Road.
Eight fifty-eight, and what is the distance from the property to the hundred, to the R three?
Or to the, you mean from the panels to the residential structures?
From the panels.
Yeah. So the proposed panels to the residential structures, I believe, are eighty feet, as opposed to a hundred feet in that example. They're also seeking a waiver to the height requirement, and then I think one other dimensional requirement, which doesn't, I think, I don't believe it directly implicates the, the abutting residences. So. And that, that's, that's the other thing about this issue, and why it is particularly important with this application, is this is an area where the lot is in I one, but the immediately abutting lots are residential zones. So.
So, all right. And then, so my, I was looking at this with Brian. So, right. So the first thing would be to change that to a special permit, which I think we're all on board with. Also, when we created that solar bylaw, we clearly intended for them to be ground-mounted solar panels, not carports, boat ports, storage ports. So this, this project that's being proposed, that will eventually get to us, they're, they're elevated solar energy mechanisms designed so that things get stored underneath. The ones we approved were the ones that are on like a field. They're, they don't have anything underneath. So.
That question. Why do we like those so much? The other ones that just, it's just a field of solar panels, instead of, instead of using like.
Well, that's why there's this waiver being, gonna be presented to us, because in our bylaw, the maximum height is fifteen feet, right? These are gonna be, are being proposed at twenty-two feet, right?
But there's one thing to say about that particular.
So, and that's to allow for storage underneath them. There are, there were some that are fifteen feet that allow storage underneath. But I think we should define, you know, these structures a little bit more, because car, like, where do we, we haven't defined carports in our zoning bylaw. Boat ports, storage ports. We should define that, because it's different.
Mashpee Carmen, they have them, that's a car.
And that came in front of us, because it's a special permit.
All right.
And we think the ones at Christ the King were permitted, because it's a religious organization, right? So how do other people install carports, storage ports, boat ports, right? If we're gonna start to, if that's gonna be a product that's coming online, right? And, hey, you know, these little businesses, they, if they can sell solar energy, that's great, right? But we should define what those are.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah. So I think we need to define them. And if they fall under the same rules and regulations as our ground-mounted solar panels, so be it. But right now, it's not clear in the bylaw.
The only thing I like to see, where ground-mounted, okay, they cut out a hundred trees, they put these solar panels on. What's the, trees clean the air and do a lot of work. How much electricity we're gonna get for twenty years on these solar panels, and we're gonna lose a.
Where it's, the state protects them.
I hope so.
No, the state, the state protects solar farms.
Oh, yeah.
You can't eliminate them, right?
Yeah.
But these carports, these carports, boat ports, storage ports, they would be over, this would be a way for people to use their already disturbed areas on their sites.
All right.
Do you know what I mean? Like, over existing parking lots.
I like to see that in one of these, only disturbed areas that you can put the solar farms instead of. Like, go down one thirty and sandwich. They cut a lot of the trees down.
I know. That's probably.
And the other fence, they put the solar panels. And how much electricity do the solar panels really give, give us, you know?
They could have put.
There's money to be made on.
They could have put apartments there, and then put solar panels on top of it.
Yeah.
I think with the carports, immediately, I think they should be pushed back. You've got to have a decent-sized piece of land. We should not see them.
We should not see them on the road, in this particular boatyard where they're doing these carports. I don't think you can see them from Falmouth Road. Can you?
So in this particular project, I suspect you probably would not be able to unless you, like, stopped right in front of the entranceway, because there's a significant vegetated buffer at the front of the lot. There's also a number of warehouse, uh, storage facilities, single-floor, uh, drive-up storage facilities that would be obstructing the view to them as well. But, I mean, that's one thing that, you know, the town engineer could potentially ask of the applicant is to do kind of a line of site, site study relative to those. You know, I did raise at the plan review meeting, what's the height of the trees in the, you know, both on the perimeter of that lot and on the adjacent lots in the residential neighborhoods relative to the proposed twenty-two-foot height. And the reason why I mentioned that in particular was because if you look at that lot topography before it gets to the residences, there's a significant slope going downhill. So the trees there already have, like, the perception of a shorter height. Even though they're just as mature as the trees on the lot, they're starting off, like, I don't know, it's probably anywhere from five to eight feet lower. So, you know, I think that that's certainly something to think about. My recommendation, or excuse me, my suggestion here, or proposal here, is narrowly limited to the procedural component of this. It's just, should we make I one a special permit? It's just, should we make I-1 a special permit, or should we say no waivers in I-1 to provide that clarity? And the reason why is because Warren articles for this are due July 14th. So it does sound like we should have some discussion about carports and, uh, uh, you know, other storage facilities, and I'm certainly on board with that. I'm just not sure that we're gonna, uh, land at an answer there in time for the Warren article for July 14th.
Too big.
Especially when we don't have a July 2nd meeting, so it's like, kind of fast approaching. So, um, and there are provisions in there that are kind of challenging, because we have, we already ha- allow, as of, uh, as of right in I-1, and obviously, everything's by a special permit in C-2 and C-3, a maximum of a 15-foot height. Well, under the fire code, to let fire trucks get in, there's a 13 and a half-foot height, right? So 15 feet is already pretty tall. I mean, that could easily cover a carport if folks wanted to. I think the extra seven feet is because of the rotating nature of the panels. They want to be able to capture as much sunlight.
Right.
So they're not, I think these, it's potential these panels, but in general, my understanding is there's two types of panels. Ones that'll just rent, rotate in two cardinal directions to capture sunlight in two directions, and some that'll rotate in all four. You know, they'll kind of go, yeah. So, um, so there's that, there's that, there's 15 feet already. And then there's, uh, what, what I had noticed, and Mary had also pointed out to me as well and reminded me of, and we had a, a nice discussion about it, is we have this provision about mowing the grass underneath the panels. So that implies that it's not intended for carports. Of course, then the flip side of all of this is these large-scale ground-mounted, uh, solar projects that have, um, high-height requirements like that are often interpreted by towns as allowing for carports. But of course, this provision throws a snafu.
Very clear.
Yeah, that provision's-
You know, we did, we did, like, PowerPoints for people, and it, there was no carport in sight in those. They were clear, ground-mounted.
So that's like a really good point, and I can raise that with Dave and let him know that as the building commissioner.
You mentioned storage, so that's not a carport. What's that mean?
Well, so I said something, hey, we don't allow carports. And somebody said, well, they're not using it as a carport, they're putting, they're storing stuff underneath it.
A tractor trailer or a construction?
I don't know.
I wouldn't like that.
I don't know.
They may be storing boats under it.
Yeah, in, in this particular example, in the back of this lot are boats that candidly haven't seen water in a long time and probably won't see water for a long time if ever again. They're kind of fixer-upper boats that may or may not even be seaworthy. There's also, I believe, actually, I don't want to speak out of place. I, there were some other-
Trailers?
Items, yeah, I think, like, potentially like RV-type trailers in the back there as well, so.
But that sounds like a junkyard now. You know, you have boats that they can't repair, we gotta store them, let's put them under our solar panels, and they sit there for years, and all of a sudden, oh, we got a junkyard.
You're really not gonna see them, Dennis. It's far enough back, you won't see them.
But it'd be junk back, you know what I mean? I don't want a junkyard, no care how far back it is.
Sure, and while I definitely appreciate all of these comments and think they will come into play when we look at substantive changes, like, hey, do we even want to allow that kind of activity? I think, at least for what I'm raising, it's purely the procedural issue, which is the question of, do we make I-1 a special permit versus do we just not allow waivers in, to the dimensional requirements in I-1? But I just feel the zoning bylaw needs that clarity, and this board needs to decide which direction it wants to take.
All right, so I, I, I think you should draft up, uh, an amendment, a Warren article that would amend, um, that section of, um, is it the use table? Item number 12, to change it from PR, PR to SP.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think you made a good point there. I don't know if we do want a special permit in I. Maybe we should just keep it the way it is. So we don't do variances, waivers.
So the way to do that, then, yeah.
It's so messy, what's coming before us, Karen. It's so messy.
I think we have more power with a special permit.
That, yeah, I think we should go to a special permit. We don't have to waive, make those waivers.
I know we don't have to, but we usually do.
Well, what if we get into the situation where, like, um, uh, an applicant wants a special waiver, and then, say it's like, uh, 174-11, lots located in multiple zoning districts, and wouldn't that compel us to come up with, like, some grand, like, some really good reason why somebody shouldn't put a junkyard next to a neighborhood?
Yeah.
Right? Doesn't that-
Well, we're still on this one.
Right, no, this, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's like-
Yeah, we're still on this one.
That's a permit then, you-
I kind of agree with Karen. Don't, don't change it.
Because this is, this, this application, it, to, to get a waiver, it's, it's kind of a workaround. They're going to the ZBA, they're gonna come here. It's really stretching the jurisdiction of all our boards. It really is. And it's gonna get, if, if we don't change that to a special permit, um, it's gonna continue to be messy.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's no way in an industrial zone for them to get waivers.
Well, I think-
And so you always have to allow a mechanism for them to be able to ask and then appeal. And see, they, right now, they, they don't have a mechanism to appeal. They just, they don't.
So-
Well, I think both, I think both clean it, sorry.
You could be, we, they could get a constructive grant and get everything they want. Whereas if you have a special permit, you're able to decide on it and say why you won't give, why you won't give that waiver.
So Dennis and Mary are right in that making that a special permit definitely empowers this board more. One thing I will say, though, is that both approaches do clean it up. Because if you just say no waivers, that's the end, for I-1, that's the end of the story. You know, like, you're either complying or you're not. And to some extent, that does make sense, because I-1 is industrial, you know? And this is a rare instance where it's right there next to a residence. But that may even be all the more reason not to grant a waiver, is that they are next to a residence, so.
Let me ask something. If you say, there's no waivers, can I appeal, will you appeal that to somebody else to say?
Who do you appeal to?
Why won't they give me a waiver?
If it's in the code, it's in the code, it would be tough. I, here's the other thing is, unfortunately, either approach may need to involve an opinion from council, and it's because this, you know, solar does fall under 40A Section 3, where it's technically a protected use, but the wording there is, says you may not unreasonably regulate. So either way, you're putting a slightly additional restriction on it with either approach. You're either requiring a special permit in I-1-
I forgot about that case.
Where it was, yeah, where it was as of right, or you're taking away the ability to get waivers to, to the dimensional requirements in I-1. Now, the question is, do either, uh, unreasonably regulate solar?
Can we ask our council what his opinion is, which would suit us best off this?
Maybe get an opinion letter from her.
Yeah, I would probably just wait until-
What they've got, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we get closer to do that, but I think, wait, let me think about this. So timing-wise, well, the Warren articles have to be drafted 714.
You have to pass it in, we have to pass them in.
So, but then this board will still have an opportunity to review and vote, vote on it. So another way to do this is, just draft both. I mean, they're both simple and quick, right? Next board meeting, we'll have five voting members, you can take a vote on that. And then also, I mean, you can still, we can still get an opinion on boat, like-
And have that opinion letter with it.
Yeah, before, before the board discussion to send it to town meeting.
Good idea.
So one of the two things would be to change the plan review to special permit. The other one would be a statement that we're not gonna grant waivers?
For I-1 only.
Okay.
For, to the dimensional requirements for I-1.
And would that be in the bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you just write it in. It would just clarify that.
Okay.
Either one patches that hole, you know?
Okay.
So.
So we're gonna put, uh, carport, boat port, storage port issue, we're gonna table that for now, and-
Yeah.
We would have to-
I'll definitely tell Dave, hey, listen, when this is drafted, I heard from the chair of the planning board that when this was drafted, it was not intended for carports. I'll definitely tell him that.
So I think I, I think I sent you the PowerPoint presentation? I'll send it to you again. Because the PowerPoint presentation does not have any carports or anything like that on there. And I think we discussed that we didn't want to.
Well, that's the more important, right? So it's, either way, it's, there, there's a potential omission there. So if it's in the meeting minutes, or like, if it's express, if it was expressly represented that you guys did not want carports, then that's a slam dunk. You know?
20, 20.
2020.
Could we see that PowerPoint?
Yeah, I can send you the PowerPoint.
That'd be good.
It could be 2023, it could be 2023.
Oh.
Yeah.
2023?
Yeah, it was 2023. It was 2023. I'm not looking at it right now, but that's what I had remembered.
So, yeah. So, yeah, and I, we, we could, maybe it was captured in the minutes, I don't know. But I, I remember just, like, wanting to get this done and not caring about the carports.
Yeah.
So, um, and maybe, maybe we should see if any other towns look on the cape, regulate carports with zoning. All right. Okay, so there's that. Okay, so the next one, the next possibility, it's, I know it's double-sided, but this one is Article 4, and it's got this little drawing, squiggly drawing, okay? So, uh, so we have lots when they're, lots that are in multiple zoning districts, right? So we had, we had something in front of us that they opted to, I had to recuse myself because I was in a butter. They opted to enter onto a Schumett Road instead of Route 130.
Right.
And, um, what I'm wondering, and I asked Brian to research, is when we have these industrial commercial lots that are, that, that also have a piece on residential land and access to, I'm just, for the sake of saying it, access to a residential road, can they have their industrial or commercial use access through the residential road?
I don't think so, I don't, yeah.
So I don't like that.
I mean, that's why I thought we were gonna get it.
You know, and through that proposal, I learned that when you have a commercial property with a residential piece to, like, the parcel, you own a parcel, and most of it is commercial, and some of it is residential, the commercial zoning rules over into the residential piece, but that residential piece can negatively impact a residential neighborhood. So I asked Brian to look to see if we could regulate access in that situation so that something that was along Route 130 and kind of dipped onto a Schumett Road would have to access through Route 130.
They should have done that in the first place. If you look at that now, they could have easily gone into there from 130, right beside the landscaping place.
So the neighborhood lucked out, because it's a low-traffic use, you know?
Yeah, that's without, you know?
So, any progress?
Oh, so I think that that's probably a question of law. Is, one, one point of clarity, though, is, my understanding is, the way things are structured in a split-zone lot, if you have commercial and residential, if you keep all of the commercial build on the commercial side of the lot, then you're in compliance. So it's not that the commercial part of the build can expand over into the residential side of things.
In that case, in the particular example she's talking about, it did not expand into the residential.
Right, and that sounds to me like it would be compliant with what you, what you can do. The question's just about access, and that's just not something I'm familiar with, and it would involve, likely involve researching case law, so I just wouldn't want to step out of my lane there, you know?
So, can, can we put that on your list of things to do?
Sure, I mean, again, I'd probably loop in Town Council's office on that, though.
Is that good? We can ask them?
Yeah, might as well.
Yeah. Because sometimes you can't deny access.
Oh, yeah.
But if we can, that would, that would be healthier way to, to deal with that. You understand my question, right?
Oh, of course, I, you know, and without giving an answer, I, I suspect it would be challenging to do for as-of-right builds. I think as a condition for a special permit, if the board had a rational reason to do it, then it would be a lot more enforceable. But in an as-of-right situation where they don't have to go for a special permit, like, just to have it in the code, that's probably gonna be very challenging.
So there's no way to write our bylaws to make that happen, access on residential road?
Yeah, so again, I, I don't want to answer the question. I, this, this is just what I suspect, just based on working knowledge. I suspect it would be, I think it could definitely be done as a special permit condition, as long as the board in its findings stated the factual rationale supporting it 100%. But to do it blanket in the bylaw, I just don't know, and so I don't want to step out of line.
All right, and the last thing I, I picked out was, um, it's on the other side. It's Section 17424 CG. This is when you have an existing special permit and the owner wants to annex and add land, right?
Yeah.
Like, we saw at Willabend.
Yeah.
This is the piece of the bylaw that allowed, um, it allows you to use the zoning from the date of the original special permit. And I think we should just get rid of that paragraph.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
I definitely agree with that one.
So let's go forward with that.
Sure.
We'll just delete G. I mean, I have no problem for a special permit to add land to the special permit if they follow the local zoning on that new, the current zoning on that new land. So I don't want to prevent that. Because some people like to, because of the condominiums. See, that's the whole thing, um, with condominiums with their own wastewater treatment facility.
Yes, so they want to add more.
Right, they want to add land, you know, there's, there is some sense to modify the special permit to put more land into that project.
So can you say, like, add land for certain reasons, like?
But using, using current zoning, not the zoning from 30 years ago.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Does that matter, or we should just strike this and get rid of it?
Well, I think if they're gonna use current zoning, it's effectively the same as just applying for a new special permit.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
All right, so we can just strike this and not have any negative impact?
No, I-
Okay.
Right, but of course, every special permit that's, assuming it passes this board's vote and town's meeting vote, and then AGO review, and becomes a part of our code, every special permit that occurred before then would be grant, uh, what's the current term now? Would still be allowed, um-
Yeah, grandfather's out.
Yeah. Would still be allowed, um, as a pre-existing, uh, non-conforming use or structure.
So we've only had two applications under this.
Right.
One was Willabend, which we all know the story of that. The other one was on Tudor Way, remember?
Yep.
And they had landlocked land that was also, has nitrogen credits on it. And they were gonna use the nitrogen credits area as the open space for the new-
Was that the Mastings part, one of the Mastings?
I forget, I forget. But that, we weren't head over heels on that project either, because the land that was gonna be used for open space was already set aside for nitrogen, a nitrogen credit. So it was like they were, it was like they were double-dipping on that land, but, um, so. They weren't, it, it, this, this didn't, this, in my opinion, hasn't recently brought in any good projects, so I think we should strike it. All right. Sound good?
Yep.
So we'll keep that on the agenda for next time? All right.
Mm-hmm.
Chair's activities, don't have any. Town planners report.
Um, let's think, a couple of quick things. One is, we have officially formed and scheduled the first, what I'm now referring to as PENZ working group.
PENZ?
Okay. So this is formally referred to as the Proposed Raise and Replace Bylaw. We've called it PENZ for Pre-Existing Non-Conforming Structures, since that's the primary focus of it. So it's capital P. So it's capital P, capital N, capital S. Um, and the working group's formed, and the first meeting will be on six twenty-four at ten AM.
What day of the week is that?
Uh, that is a Wednesday.
And who, who's in the working group?
So, uh, myself, Karen Faulkner, um, Glenn McCarthy, Bob Orsi, and Mike Richardson.
Oh, good. Okay.
And I'm not a voting member. Um.
You can be the tiebreaker.
No, actually, there's one other, there is one other person that's a tiebreaker, whose name is escaping me. They're out of Pompanesset.
Was he the person who suggested last time?
Steve Cook?
Steve Cook?
Yeah.
He, okay, good.
Yeah.
So he agreed?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I haven't chatted with him or met him in person, but he sent me an email saying he's on board.
That's wonderful. He's on the Concom.
Yeah, that's why I was having trouble remembering his name. I just haven't met him yet.
He's on the Constitution Commission.
That's right, he is. Thank you for reminding.
Is he a designer? Is he design? Is he an architect or something like that?
So how many people on this board are from New Seaberry or the Pompanesset?
Michael Richardson.
Yeah.
Right.
Bob Orsi.
Glenn McCarthy.
Glenn McCarthy.
Too many.
Um.
My understanding is Steve Cook's a builder also.
A builder, okay. Steve Cook really, he's in that neighborhood, but I don't think he is.
But it's, it's great that he's on Concom. That's what I was trying to go for, as somebody who kind of was industry savvy and knows Concom.
The people that are down there, their, their opinions vary.
Yeah.
Glenn varies from Bob Orsi, who varies from Michael Richardson. And I can see Steve Cook being kinda like neutral, and Karen being the researcher.
Well, I see Karen as a different part of the town.
I am, yeah.
Speaking for the people that don't live in that.
But, you know, Glenn.
Well, the.
This is gonna affect the whole town, right?
It is gonna, it could. It could be an overlay, or it could affect the whole town. The people from the other neighborhoods, right, they were interested in it, but they weren't as passionate about it. So there'll be, there'll be, there'll be time for public comment.
All right, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm hoping to have another public workshop like we did, once you guys get going.
Yeah, I, and I suspect that it will be both. Again, I don't want to speak for the working group because one of the key roles that I view the working group playing is setting the goal before we start drafting.
All right.
You know? Um, but I, I suspect, I mean, I know I personally would like to see some light tweaks to that overall section of our bylaw that would apply town-wide just to bring clarity to applicants, because I've had, you know, very well-reputed, experienced land-use attorneys come into my office and say, "I don't get what we're supposed to do here," you know? And I've said, looked at the bylaw, and I've said, "Neither do I," you know? So there's, there's some wording there that definitely needs to be clarified, just, um, for pathways.
You said light tweaks.
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
For town-wide, you know, but then I, I also envision it being, uh, more, more.
Detrimental to the neighborhood, not just detrimental?
More in-depth. Well, yeah, the big thing is some procedural concerns, which is one to do a Section six finding which, versus when a variance is required versus, yeah, just the different options for the applicant. But then the, um, the other thing that I see is this more in-depth concept that has a long history here, dealing specifically with Popinesset, dealing specifically with the Reg twenty-five and flood plains and just coastal concerns.
Yeah.
And how those interact with pre-existing non-conforming structures.
So is the title going to be?
PENZ.
PENZ.
Raise and replace, you think, or are we gonna call it?
No, it's PENZ.
PENZ, yes.
Because raise and replace really technically is just, you know, tear down and rebuild, but pre-existing non-conforming structures also deals with additions, you know?
Most, most bylaws that deal with this are under the section of, of non-conforming lots.
Mm-hmm.
So it was hard to do research on it, you know, see what other towns did. I mean, I remember Ipswich was an interesting bylaw to look at, and so wasn't P-Town's. P-Town was very interesting, so.
Oh, yeah.
Have fun. Have fun, guys. All right, what else, Brian?
Uh, in terms of my report, I just wanted to draw the, this board's attention to two things, and I thought they were both appropriate just because we just had elections, although they're also not appropriate in the sense that everybody on the board is a very experienced board member, including our newly-elected Mike Milbury, as he has experience on the ZBA. But it never hurts to get refreshment of your knowledge and potentially learn about updates and changes um, in, in different areas. So the first is the Citizen Planer Training Collaborative is having a workshop on the roles and responsibilities of planning and zoning boards. Uh, the materials are in your packet. That's on June eighteenth at five thirty PM. There's information about, uh, how to attend and how to register at the appropriate link. And then I also included in your packet a guide for members of public boards and commissions that's produced by the state. I believe it's the OIG's office, or it may be the, you know, which, OIG is the Office of Inspector General, or it may be the OIG in collaboration with the AGO, i.e. the Attorney General Office. Either way, I just thought they were both useful resources to have and handy quick-reference tools if you ever bump into a complicated question and you might want to troubleshoot the answer.
I believe all these are paid, can be paid for by the planning board budget.
Yes, they can.
So the CBT.
If you desire to attend, the registration fee can be covered by planning board budget.
They're by Zoom. They're by Zoom, and, um, yeah, you just contact the planning office.
By Zoom, all of them?
I think so.
Yeah, there's a lot on there. The one that I thought was most pertinent to this board is just generally roles and responsibilities of planning and zoning boards. The other reason why that may be good to attend is some folks may not know what the responsibilities of a zoning board are if you've only served on a planning board. And so it's good to just know the two different roles of the two different boards because there's obviously a lot of interplay and overlap.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Board member committee reports Cape Cod Commission. So in your packet, there's, um, some notices of meetings. Um, I'm, I don't know if I'll be successful in this, but it's tomorrow at three o'clock, Thursday, June fifth. At three o'clock, you can meet in person or virtually. It's, um, it's, I think it's the Hull Commission. And it's to consider draft amendments to Chapter D of the Code of the Cape Cod Commission, which has to do with development agreements. So I haven't gotten through them all because unfortunately, they didn't provide a redline version, okay? But it says to enter into a development agreement, the town must have a certified local comprehensive plan
Right.
for any RPP dated two thousand and eighteen or after. So right now, the town of Mashpee can enter into a development agreement, because we have a certified LCP. It's certified in the nineties, but it's certified. So we'll lose that standing. So I was gonna suggest that they don't, that we're in the process of doing our LCP, that that wouldn't go into effect for twenty-four months. To give, to give towns the opportunity to complete their LCPs and get them certified.
I remember the first one.
Yeah.
Said, "We get mitigation money if we have an LCP," you know, the plan. We got the plan. "Oh, that goes to the Cape Cod Commission, and we deliver that." So I was blindsided by that because, you know, I, I think that's, I'm, oh, like on the board, I always are, "Can't we get some money from these projects to do something?" And Charles would say, "We gotta have this plan, then we'll be able to..." Then he said, "Oh, no, the Cape Cod can't."
They hold the money for us.
Yeah, but they don't give it off to us. They could say, "Sandwich needs a light down here," so they put a light.
Oh, yep.
You know, so.
Yep.
It seems like they're doing the same thing now with this thing. You, you know, you're not gonna get certified unless you have your plan.
So are you, are you guys comfortable me saying that on behalf of this board? That we're, that we're okay with them setting a date, but, you know?
Definitely, because.
But for them to give us twenty-four months to, to get it done, so they would, mm?
Should we ask for thirty-six months?
No, twenty-four. I think, I think they would really laugh at me if I asked for any more than twenty-four.
Well, just, it can take a long time to adopt a plan. That's the only thing, so.
Right.
Yeah.
What's the worst they could say?
We've been working on it for a long time.
And, well, we'll see. The other thing is it has to go to the Assembly of Delegates after this. And our, the chair of our select board is our representative to the Assembly of Delegates. So Michaela Wyman-Columbo is our representative to the Assembly delegate. So there's another avenue to try to get that cushioned. So, all right, good. I will, I will say that you guys are on board with that, too. All right. Charter Review Committee, no meeting. Community Preservation Committee, no meeting. Design Review.
Oh, yes, this was an interesting one. This is the front of the specialty grocery store that looks out, and you know where this is?
Yeah.
You've got Rockland Trust, then this, and then you've got the, further down, the first, first credit union which faces jobs fishing.
Yeah.
So this is the front of the building. I never knew there was a front of the building that didn't have an entrance. This does not. The entrance is over, coming off of Shellbeck Road, Shellbeck Way. So you enter, and I think you go in front of or behind Rockland Trust.
Behind Rockland.
Behind, and then there is the building. And it has a door. That's really the front, but this is called the front. It was, it was chaotic, Brian, because it said, "Two signs currently proposed, seventy-seven square feet and forty square feet." And we all thought they were talking about the walls. And I was trying to figure out the length and the height of the building to see if it met that percentage that it could meet. Turns out, they're gonna put three signs on the front of the building, on the entrance of the building, and on the side that faces the first union, first credit union. The, um, the signs will go, one sign will go at the entrance of Falmouth Road, the driveway that we have to see is gonna happen, and the other one at the entrance to Shellbeck. It's kind of a, uh, an odd configuration the way you have to enter, possibly the way you exit, whether you're gonna be exiting. And I think that if, if Falmouth Road entrance, coming out of the parking lot, turning right to Falmouth does not happen, I don't think that project will go. But it's a big project, and it's, it's not even, I had a question for Mary because we weren't, they're already at the Cape Cod Commission. They haven't left. They haven't been voted on yet, but yet they're having meetings. But I guess we didn't vote on anything.
Yeah, we can't.
Basically.
Well, we can't. So I had a little discussion with Brian, and I thought it was best to have it go to uh, Design Review and Site Plan Review.
Before.
Before. I think it's okay with the Cape Cod Commission that that happens. This board can't act.
Right.
But I thought that that was better for them to have that information because there is this question about whether they can have a curb cut on Route twenty-eight there.
Have you found anything on that?
We're researching.
Well.
We found minutes.
They feel that they're gonna, no, they're gonna present a letter from their council.
Well, before I dive into that, since I'm Plan Review Committee anyway, I had a question on Design Review Committee. What was the end result of Design Review Committee?
Um, we are gonna wait to see what the, our job is, our limitation is pretty much signage. And we want to see them finish. We want to know the size, the color, everything. We can't vote on anything. They just, they just had little insets there, you know, at the entrance, Shellbeck and Falmouth Road. We have to see them like anything else. It'll be a freestanding sign.
Okay, interesting, yeah, because, so Mary Ann schedules the Design Review Committee meetings and the Plan Review Committee meetings, and I had a conversation with her and the reason um, why I suggested that we kind of get ahead of things as opposed to doing it more towards, um, the end of the application process or the DRI review process, I should say. Is, I had also actually had a conversation with the Cape Cod Commission, who said that they would prefer that because this is a mechanism to get some local input on the front end to them during their reviews.
So, so we can do that in the future?
Yeah, so where Plan.
If it's okay with the Cape Cod Commission, it's, it's fine.
Yeah, so where Plan Review Committee landed is.
They can't come, we can't hear it, but Design Review and Plan Review can go forward.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
So where Plan Review landed is, we voted for each of the respective department to send comments and writing to the Building Department, and the Building Department will then, because these both technically fall under building, um, will send those, uh, to the Cape Cod Commission. So we'll be getting comments to them on Friday. Are we switching to Plan Review? Because then I, now I can dive into the curb cut thing, or? I just wanna.
You tabled it. It'll have to come back.
They have to come back and show us the exact signs, where they're gonna be exactly, specifications, the size, because they didn't have any of that.
Did you schedule when they were coming back, though, or?
Um, I don't, no, I don't think we did. We didn't. They, they don't know when they're gonna have them.
Okay.
Is that the only thing that was before you?
Well, that's, that's what our job is, basically.
No, I mean, that's the only address that was in front of you.
Yes.
Okay.
Only project, okay.
All right. So we can go to Site Plan Review.
Yeah, so.
You're gonna assemble comments, put them, and funnel them through the.
Building Department to the Cape Cod Commission. Uh, my comments do focus on this access, access issue, but not from a curb cut permit perspective. A curb cut permit is, I believe, entirely state, because that's a state way, um.
It's a state.
But, yeah, so that, that's entirely up to the state. It's more from, so, uh, it's more from, uh, any local, locally-imposed restriction perspective. And there are two potential restrictions that I'm aware of. The one is the bike path, right? So the argument is, or the question is, rather, is can you actually cut through the bike path? Or is it implied or in any way expressed in the terms of the easement for the bike path that, uh, bikes should be able to travel freely without having to worry about, um, a curb cut over that lot? Because there's an easement specific to that lot for the bike path.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the second question is whether or not.
Who's had easement given to, to the town?
I believe it's the town, yeah. Yeah, I believe it's the town, so.
Okay.
Um, and there's also a question, I think now, whether or not there's even an easement by prescription to the public because it's been used as a bike path for over twenty years, so.
What does that mean?
So an easement by prescription is similar to adverse possession. It's just for the, for an easement instead. So adverse possession has set criteria. It's like four or five criteria, open and notorious, you know, for thirty years, et cetera, et cetera. And what it basically allows you to do is to claim land that's owned by somebody else because you have effectively possessed it for a certain time period. So an example of an easement by prescription would be, you know, there's a walking path to a beach. Um, it potentially is a portion of a private way or potentially not. There may even be a question of title, or it may be clear that it's on a private way, but people have walked over it for twenty years. And then all of a sudden, new owners say, "Hey, that's part of our private way. No trespass. We're putting up a, a guard hut and a gate and saying you can't get there," you know? Or another analogy is, is the ancient ways here in Mashpee, right? So if, um, if a pub, if the public has been using a private way for twenty years in a certain way, either by biking on it or walking on it, they potentially have an easement by prescription. Now, the unfortunate reality of that is a difficult way to enforce it, is you actually have to go to court. Usually it's land court, um, but you have to get a ruling saying that it exists, and you have to prove that it was used in that way for the time period, and it meets all of the elements of that criteria.
So this, this, this piece of the road, you think doesn't need an easement anymore because it's being used?
Well, I think it's, it's a position that potentially the public could take, you know? I don't, I'm not recommending it, and I'm not giving an opinion on it. I'm just saying it has been there for, my understanding anyways, it has been there for twenty years. Um, so I'm not, but again, you know, that still raises the same question as to the recorded easement is, is it still implied or even expressed that you can cut through the bike path to allow for car access? So that's, I just, yeah. I, I mentioned this less at the Plan, I'm talking about it more now than I was in the Plan Review Committee, but I basically just left it at, it would, if. Plan Review Committee, but I basically just left it at, if you have an opinion from your council to the applicant, it would be nice for us to be able to review it and take a look at it.
Well, what about the subdivision question?
So, what I found on, so, for background, what was posed to me is whether or not there's a 50-foot buffer restriction, um, on that portion of the lot into 28, or if there was a general no-access restriction. So I found two things. One is, there is a 50-foot buffer on 28, but it's, it allows for an exception for driveways, and that's in our code. So you can have a singular driveway as an exception in our code. The second thing I found was that this particular lot was at, along with the lot where, that the bank is built on, the adjacent lot that the bank is built on, was originally proposed as a four-lot subdivision that was entitled Seapit Way. It was a little cul-de-sac with four lots. It then, by way of an A&R, got reduced to two lots. Now, written into, at least on the minutes of that A&R, where it was reduced to two lots, it said, "There will be no access..." Dennis, you're actually on these minutes, too. I love it when I like go way back and I find Dennis on the meeting minutes, I'm like, "Go Dennis," you know? But, um.
I remember all that.
Yeah. So written into the minutes was, "There will be no access on Route 28." Now, I haven't found a copy of a plan that specifically says that. The land court plans don't say that. The land court plan that's recorded is 3550-G. So between F and G, in F they were four lots, and G they went down to two lots. They don't specifically put that restriction, though they do have the bike path easement on it.
Where are those lots exactly?
What's that?
Looking at the land right now, where are those lots exactly? Rockland Trust and this piece?
And the lot is behind it, it's the lot behind Rockland Trust, yeah.
Yeah, it's like this.
So that's, um, Shellback Way.
That's Rockland Trust.
Yep.
That's, yeah. Shellback Way on 28, on the same side as the hardware store and the Deer Crossing condominiums.
They tried to get Mashpee Commons to let them come on there, you know, it was a job fishing row there, you know, behind the credit union.
Most recently, yeah.
And it would've been a done deal, but Mashpee Commons said, "No." Another thing, I don't understand what you mean, if there's a bike path, you can't have an access, you know, cars can't go over, because when we looked at that road re-plan, they had the bike path, you know?
Well, yeah.
As you saw, one of the, where across is, is right at the gas station where the cars come out.
Well, there's an easement that he hasn't read.
Yeah, well, my, my response would be, to that would be twofold, is, one, which would be clearly a stronger position, or a stronger basis for that interpretation, would be if it's expressly written into the easement, you know? If it says, "This shall be a bike path, and there shall be no vehicular access cut into it." Uh, two is, um, implied, which I think is a harder interpretation to make, but it may be there, you know? Um, so anyway, doubling back to the A&R, uh, that raises a host of questions, because we don't have the copy of the planning board's approved plan that, you know, hopefully has some sort of written restriction on it. It, it may be up in the attic, the plans in the attic apparently got shuffled a few years back, when some scanning projects were done. I have thoroughly searched the electronic versions and have not come up with it. And Tom Fadell and I also went up to the attic, and both narrowly escaped with our lives. And, but we did do some looking up there, and, you know, despite the rolling boulders and the tarantulas and people, you know, chasing us down, it was a little bit like an Indiana Jones movie up there. We, uh, we were unable to locate it, but we did not fully search through.
But Tom did think it was a subdivision plan.
Well, so, yeah, he thought it was a subdivision plan.
Oh.
But my understanding is that it's, based on those minutes, which are around the same time as this 3550-G plan that's with the land court, it was an A&R.
It was an A&R.
Yeah.
So we need to get those minutes to Tom, that will jog his memory.
Yeah.
And he might be able to figure out where the plan is.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we can get him, only because, I mean, I don't, I'm not expressing an opinion.
Excuse me, what are you getting from the lawyer on the other side?
Well, so I asked them for an opinion on that, too.
Yeah.
And here's why, I think no matter what, it's gonna raise a host of questions. So if it is an A&R, the question is, can you restrict? Can you put in a restriction like that on an A&R? And, you know, the answer is, probably not, you know, and there you are, no. But then, the follow-up question to that is, well, is it too late to appeal or do anything about it? You know? And then the question to that is, well, obviously the appeals period has expired, but can you just go in and do something like a declaratory judgment, you know, in court and?
You mean the town take action on that?
No, the applicant.
Okay.
Current owner.
All right.
Current owner. So it raises those questions, and then, there was another set of questions that I think had also raised along that line, but.
Yes, I don't think we should make any, any type of assertion or opinion on this, but I just thought that, because the last time it was in front of us, there was chatter about this, and I'd rather them know about this.
Yeah.
Before they get too far in with the Cape Cod Commission, because that process is so expensive.
Hundred percent.
It's so expensive, that, um, if we, if, if Design Review and Plan Review have some comments on this kind of stuff, they should have them now.
No, a hundred percent. And I had that conversation with Jeannie, who's, I think, the de facto project manager of the application, or the manager of the application, who works for the applicant. As a one-on-one after the Plan Review Committee, I was like, "Hey, listen, I don't want you guys to get the message that we're out to kill this project, per se.
Right.
We just want you to know that there is this problem, and we'd rather look into it, investigate it, before you go all the way through the Cape Cod Commission."
And then have it come back here.
And then we're like, "Just kidding, guys," you know?
That would, that's not safe of that.
So, um, but I, I guess the two other points I wanted to mention about the A&R is, another explanation could be, which is unlikely, is that in the code at the time, for whatever reason, there wasn't, there was some sort of provision that would have blocked access on 28 for that particular lot. So in other words, it, it would have been a provision of the A&R to be an A&R, so for it to be compliant. Unlikely, but possible, worth exploring. And then a last, a last provision, no, I'm done, is, um, uh, it could have been, tho- those A&R lots, I don't know how this might work, but they could have been originally a part of a subdivision plan, right? That was one big lot.
Yeah.
And that overarching subdivision plan had that restriction and condition on it. Then they A&R'd these lots, and they just carried forward that restriction from the subdivision plan, so, anyway.
Oh, God.
Right?
My question. I guarantee you, all next week, people are gonna come up to me, "What kind of food stores going on, Trader Joe's?"
We don't know.
And I keep on saying, "We don't know." And, nigga, when they see this tonight, they're gonna say, "Now tell me what it's gonna be."
Yep.
But nobody knows yet, right?
Technically, no.
Ooh, technically, I like that.
Technically, no. All right.